Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Policy Committee meeting on Tuesday, November the 14th, 2023. A few housekeeping items before we begin. A reminder, this meeting is being recorded on Teams and the recording will be posted on HCDSP's website. Please mute your laptops and use the boardroom microphones when it is your turn to speak. And please use the raise hand function in Teams when you would like to speak. I kindly request that the land acknowledgement be played.
Is rich in the history and modern traditions.
Of many First Nations and the Métis.
From the lands of the Anishinaabe.
To the Atawandran.
The Haudenosaunee.
And the Métis.
These are deeply greatly.
Our steeped in Indigenous history.
As we gather today.
On these treaty land.
Our Catholic social teachings.
Call us in solidarity.
With our Indigenous brothers and sisters.
So honor and respect.
The four directions.
Lands.
Otters, plants, animals.
And ancestors.
That walked before us.
All these wonderful elements of creation exist.
Gifted to us by our Creator God.
We acknowledge and thank.
The Mississaugas of the credit First Nation.
For being stewards of this traditional territory.
Let us begin our meeting with an opening prayer by Trustee Kennedy.
In the name of the Father, Son, sorry, before we begin, sorry. Just a prayer in honor of Remembrance Day, which was just a few days ago. In the name of the Father, Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen. O God, by whose mercy the faithful departed find rest, look kindly on our departed veterans who gave their lives in the service of their country. Grant that through the passion, death, and resurrection of your Son, that they may share in the joy of your heavenly kingdom and rejoice in you with your saints forever. Amen. In the name of the Father, Son, and the Holy Spirit.
Thank you, Trustee Kennedy. So we move on to item number two, approval of the agenda. Are there any additions, deletions, or corrections to the agenda? Seeing none, may I please have a mover to approve? Trustee Agnew?
Second.
Seconded by Trustee Powell. All in favor? Anyone opposed? No one has opposed. The motion carries. Thank you very much. We will move on. The motion passes and the agenda is approved. Are there any conflicts? Item number three, declarations of conflict of interest. Are there any conflicts of interest to declare this evening? Seeing none. Item number four, delegations. We do not have any delegations this evening. We will move on to item number five, approval of the minutes. Are there any errors, additions, or deletions to the minutes of the October 10th, 2023 Policy Committee meeting? Seeing none, may I have a motion to approve the minutes of the October 10th, 2023 Policy Committee meeting? May I have a mover?
I'll move.
Trustee Kelly. Seconded by Trustee Doherty. All in favor? Is anyone opposed? No. The motion passes and the minutes are approved. Thank you, everyone. Okay. Let's move on to item number six. These are the action items. So we're going to start with item 6.1, which is Policy II-37, Volunteers in Catholic Schools. The next item on our agenda, trustees, can I have someone please move that the Policy Committee recommends that Policy II-37, Volunteers in Catholic Schools, be forwarded to the November 21st, 2023 Regular Board Meeting for approval? May I have a mover? Trustee Doherty? May I have a seconder? Trustee Kennedy, thank you. Superintendent Bakich, you now have the floor.
Thank you, and through you, Madam Chair. Trustees, as you'll know, Policy II-37, Volunteers in Catholic Schools, was reviewed at our September 12th Policy Committee meeting and was forwarded for stakeholder consultation for the period of September 15th to October 6th. The policy has been updated to reflect some minor changes, housekeeping changes, and to clarify the language regarding minimum age requirements for volunteers, to reflect a volunteer who is 18 years of age or older, as opposed to a volunteer over the age of 18. And I'm happy to take any questions that trustees may have.
Thank you, Superintendent Bakich. Trustees, I will now open the floor to any questions, and I will. I do see some hands up already. So, Trustee Doherty.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to thank everybody for the feedback provided, and based on the feedback provided, I had submitted a couple of amendments to this policy. If you scroll down the policy to the...
Thank you, Trustee Doherty. So Claudia, if you could, the amendments have been submitted prior to the meeting, so we could bring them up on the screen for everyone's discernment. So, Trustee Doherty, would you like to speak to one amendment, please?
Madam Chair, there are two amendments. One is the strikeout of three years and the addition of five years. And the second change is to delete the volunteer applicants who submit a Vol. Sact. Check that whole paragraph. So, do you want me to speak to that, Madam Chair?
Yes, please, Trustee Doherty. You can speak to your amendment.
So, the first one, it's, again, based on the feedback. We do not want to deter our parents from volunteering, like to encourage our parents. The cost of the VSE is $30 per every time. From the feedback I received, I've taken a look at all the feedback received, and lots of places there has been a suggestion for doing a Vol. Sact. Check every five years.
May I have a point of order?
Thank you, Trustee Carabella. What is your point of order?
I think the amendment should be moved and seconded, and then we have the discussion and speak to it.
The other way we could do it, if there's a friendly consensus, the reason I did it this way, if we have a friendly consensus, if it's spoken to, we don't have to do a mover and a seconder, but if we don't, we'll have to go to a mover and a seconder. Is that... Okay.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Trustee Carabella. So, I was talking to the change from three years to five years, and I'll pick up one item, one feedback, which really resonated with me, and it said, and I'll read part of that. It says, the new suggested changes for Vol. Sact. Check every three years, that means a parent needs to get one done at least five times in the 14 years they are with HCDSP. A better policy would be to require a Sact. Check, a VSE check, every five years, so Grade JK, Grade IV, and Grade IX, with signed declarations every other year. So, this is in line with the DICE's requirement, and also the... And I had suggested the change in policy earlier, which the board did not prefer, but however, that was prior to getting the feedback, so that's why I'm putting it again. So, with the five-year term, we need to get a VSE in JK, Grade IV, and one time in secondary. So, Madam Chair, this is the first item I'm talking to. Do you want me to talk to the other item, too?
No, thank you, Trustee Doherty. Let's do one amendment at a time. I think that's because I'm going to go out to the, to our fellow trustees and see, is there, are we all in agreement that maybe we could move forward with a friendly consensus if it would be the will of the board to this amendment that Trustee Doherty has brought forward? Is there anyone opposed to this amendment?
I would propose four years, just based on the feedback that I've seen. A lot of the other boards, like Toronto, New York, do three years. Four years would be, you know, if you started in Grade IX, you would have the whole high school. I don't know how many parents start in JK and go all the way to high school. Maybe some. I think that's a reasonable compromise, just given if someone, I'm just thinking if someone did start in high school, they wouldn't have to do two.
Thank you, Trustee Kennedy. So, Trustee Doherty, that's a friendly amendment to change it to four. Are you willing, or should we get a mover and a seconder?
Yeah, Madam Chair, I'd rather keep it five years, so...
Okay. Okay, so the will of the board, not a friendly consensus, so, Trustee Carabella, now you're 100% correct. We need to get a mover and a seconder for this amendment. So, you will be the mover, Trustee Doherty?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Okay, do we have a seconder? I will second that amendment.
Thank you.
So, now it's on the board. We own this amendment, up for discussion unless, you've already spoken to it, Trustee Doherty, so if you don't mind, we'll just put it out for any questions. Sorry, I don't have my hand up. So, I have a list. So, I have Trustee Agnew.
Not for this.
For another?
Not for this.
Okay, not for this? Thank you. Does anyone have a question in regards to this amendment of five years that Trustee Doherty has put forward? Trustee Carabella.
Okay, well, I would agree with Trustee Kennedy about the four years. I was seeing the feedback as well, and there were some people who wanted it every year. There's some people who wanted, who thought three years was okay. Some people thought five years. So, I think this idea of the four years during high school and twice during elementary is reasonable, so I was going to support the four-year amendment.
Okay, so, we could vote on this at the five-year, or we could do, you could propose an amendment to the amendment and changing the five to a four, it would be a simple strike and replace, if that's the will of yourself, Trustee Carabella?
I'll do that, or Trustee Kennedy, do you want to do that? Or I can move it to make it four years? So, I would make that as an amendment to four years.
Thank you, Trustee Carabella. Any discussion on changing the five to a four as an amendment to the amendment? Because if there's no further discussion, we can just go ahead and vote on it, and then we'll vote on the original amendment. Okay? Okay. So, let's go ahead and vote. So, what we're voting on is the replacement of the year five to year four put forth. We do need a mover and a seconder for that, though, officially. Trustee Carabella will move that amendment, and Trustee Kennedy will second that. Okay. All right. Trustee Agnew.
Sorry, Madam Chair. Voting to move from five to four?
Yes.
In favor.
In favor, okay. Trustee Doherty?
Opposed.
Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Trustee Kelly?
In favor.
Trustee Kennedy?
In favor.
Trustee Murphy?
In favor.
Trustee Powell?
In favor.
Trustee Saunders?
Favor.
Do we have any? I'm looking for Trustee Chua and Trustee Deepu. Trustee Deepu, Trustee Chua. One last time, Trustee Chua, Trustee Deepu. Okay, and I am opposed. So, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7 in favor, 2 opposed. The amendment passes for four years. So, now what we have to do for housekeeping, we have to go back and vote on the original amendment as amended, correct? So, we're going to go back and vote again, and this is to replace five years with four years. So, I'm going to go backwards now from the list. Trustee Saunders?
Favor.
Okay. Trustee Powell?
In favor.
Trustee Murphy?
I'm sorry, point of clarification, I'm voting...
We just have to go back. It's four years, so we're voting on whether we use four years, yes.
Favor.
Thank you, Trustee Murphy. Trustee Kennedy?
In favor.
Trustee Kelly?
Favor.
Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Trustee Doherty?
Opposed.
Trustee Agnew?
In favor.
And I am opposed. Again, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7 in favor, 2 opposed. That amendment has passed. It will be four years. Okay. So, that's the first amendment. So, Trustee Doherty, I'll move to your second amendment, and just, if you could, quickly discuss your thought behind it, and then I'll see if it's the will of the board for a friendly amendment. If not, we'll do a mover and a seconder.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Is that okay?
Yes, thank you. Just a very simple thing, is the feedback, again, going back to the feedback and received, is evidently clear that the director should not be involved in this process at all, and that's the reason why I proposed that, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Trustee Doherty. Do we have, is there a flavor at the board, the will of the board, to move ahead as a friendly amendment? Okay, well, it's not for me, sorry. So, I don't agree with this amendment. So, unfortunately, because I don't agree, we'll have to go back to a mover, Trustee Doherty, and you'll need a seconder, and we can put it on the table. Okay. Seconded by Trustee Agnew. Trustee Doherty, would you like to speak to it further?
No, Madam Chair, just one line of feedback and user's direction. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, and I just wanted to make a comment if I could, and I will be opposing this amendment, and here's the reason why, through this whole process. I know the feedback very vehemently says the director shouldn't have, but, again, I use it from the philosophy that the director has a lot of resources at his hands to be able to check, to make sure he's making the right decision, et cetera. We trust them with our 37,000, 38,000 children, that I don't see why we can't trust the director, whoever that may be at the time, with this decision, so I will be opposing it, but we'll bring it to an official vote. Okay? All right. So, this is the second amendment to strike that entire bullet point out, which would go back to the original policy, right? We would remove that amendment. So, Trustee Saunders?
Favor.
Trustee Powell? Sure. Trustee Murphy?
Sorry, I just want to be sure I'm voting in favor of keeping that the director does not make the decision.
You're voting to remove that entire bullet, which would go default to the original policy, where if you have anything offense, you are not able to be a volunteer.
In favor.
Trustee Murphy's in favor. Thank you, Trustee Kennedy.
In favor.
Trustee Kelly?
In favor.
Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
In favor. Trustee Doherty?
In favor.
Trustee Agnew?
In favor.
Trustee Powell?
Yes. Sorry, just getting a clarification.
That's okay.
Yeah. In favor, like...
In favor?
In favor.
In favor without a question mark, or in favor with a period?
It's a bit of a question mark, but I will...
Okay.
I'm okay with it.
In favor. And I am the lone opposed. 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8 in favor of removing, and 1 opposed, so that bullet will be removed. Thank you, Trustee Doherty. Okay. Who is next in line? Trustee Agnew?
Thank you very much, and through you, Madam Chair. I was looking to make an amendment to have a resource, a reference story included in this policy, and the reference is titled, I want to get the exact wording correct, so the reference is titled Volunteers in Catholic Schools: A Parent-Guardian Guide. And I'd be happy to speak to my rationale for that, if you would prefer to do it the way we just did it previously, or if you'd rather do a first and seconder.
Thank you, Trustee Agnew, and thank you, Claudia, for bringing up on the screen this amendment that you're proposing. Maybe speak to it. We'll see if it's the will of the board. If not, we'll go the other way.
Right. Thank you very much. So, again, through you, Madam Chair. So, this particular guide, and I did send it around to all trustees to take a look at, there's information in that guide for individuals who are looking to volunteer within our schools. And so, a couple of reasons why I wanted to have this included. One is, it's not the easiest documentation to find on our website. So, you need to actually click on our website, click to get involved, volunteer in schools, then read more. It's not actually, the information that's contained in that guide is not listed as part of what volunteers need to know. So, then you need to click onto Volunteers in Catholic Schools. It has the eligibility criteria listed. So, it's complicated, and if this is one of the driving guides for people to understand what they need to be aware of when they're volunteering in our schools, I do think it should be a reference in this policy. There's also wording in that particular guide that is very, very clear about what happens if somebody has a VSE that comes back with any type of offense. And the wording is very straightforward. Again, it's not listed in the eligibility criteria until you click on this particular document. And it says in this document, under eligibility criteria, volunteers with a CRC/VS that lists any offense for which an official pardon has not been received will not be accepted as a volunteer in this school. It's very, it's pretty black and white. It's there, and again, this is a document, to my understanding, that's, you know, would be utilized in the event that someone were to produce an unclean VSE. I think parents need to know that. I think they need to be aware of that well in advance. It shouldn't be hard to find. And, again, that is there, and there's nowhere else that you see that particular reference made when people are looking to volunteer. So, sorry, that was a bit long-winded, but I wanted to make sure that I covered off all of it, as to why I wanted to have that included as a reference, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Trustee Agnew. So, I look to my fellow trustees, is there the will to make a friendly consensus, or would we like to put a motion on the table and... Okay. So... Sorry. Director Klein, you'd like to speak to that?
Yeah, sure. With the policy, there would be a procedure that would be created by staff to follow, and so the procedure would have a parent guide, guardian guide, and so, I'm not sure if it's called just Handbook or something like that. That would be something that would inform the procedure. So, as such, it would be redundant. So, the next step for us is to work on procedure, and that would be something that would be referenced.
Thank you, Director Klein. Superintendent Bakich?
Thank you. And through you, Madam Chair, just to follow what Director Klein has said, so, the contents for a procedure, which was something that was suggested by trustees in our previous meetings, I believe it was in June, might have been that meeting, and also, it came forward as part of the legal opinion that we had to produce a procedure in stead of the guides. So, with the procedure, we would be looking at consolidating the contents of the parent guide and the administrator guide, which are volunteer guides, and it captured the information in the new associated procedure. That line that Trustee Agnew just referred to would be in the procedure as well.
Thank you, Superintendent Bakich. Just so I'm understanding, so, if we put it in the policy as a reference, and then in the procedure it's going to be changed, it would be redundant, or we wouldn't have a parent/guardian guide anymore? I'm missing that.
Thank you. And through you, Madam Chair, yes, exactly, that we wouldn't have a guide, so that's not to have, you know, conflicting places for parents to refer to and for school personnel to refer to as well. So, the procedure would replace both guides.
Thank you, Superintendent Bakich. Are there any, I see some hands up. I know that we had the will to leave it there, but just more clarifying questions, in case?
I have clarifying questions, but I can certainly tell that my fellow trustees need to know that I'm a manager.
Thank you, Trustee Agnew. I'm sorry, that's my job. Trustee Carabella?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Trustee Agnew, for finding this through our board website. And so, I'm just wondering, right now, if I'm a parent wanting to volunteer, am I automatically given this by the principal or at the schools?
Thank you, Trustee Carabella. Director Klein?
That would be a reference that parents would be, that we would encourage parents to have, but whether or not that's consistently done, Superintendent Bakich?
Thank you. As a follow-up, Madam Chair, to what Director Klein has said, typically, Trustee Carabella, once a parent has come forward that they want to volunteer, the parent guide is shared with them, either the link or the actual hard copy when they come to the school, from the school principal, from the staff.
Thank you, Superintendent Bakich. We have another, sorry, Trustee Carabella, you have a follow-up?
My comment then to follow up is to say, if it's available, then it should be easy to find. It's, I'm always thinking of parents and how they find things, and if it's several clicks you have to go through to find something as clear and instruct, as informative as this document, I think it should be there as a reference, and also later on, if we do the procedure. Until then, it's there, and then when the procedure comes up, if there's a need to take it away, or you link both, then it's not a big deal, I think. I'm in favor of having it. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Carabella. Trustee Doherty?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, a question to Superintendent. When do we think we are going to have this procedure ready?
Trustee Doherty, Superintendent Bakich?
Thank you, and through you, Madam Chair. Trustee Doherty, so if it's approved at our board meeting at, next week, November 21st, the procedure would come as information at our following policy meeting in December, December 12? Yeah. Is it December 12?
Policy.
Policy, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent Bakich. Trustee Doherty, do you have a follow-up?
No, thanks.
Trustee Powell?
Yeah, I just have a, so, just about this parent guide, as somebody who has been in the school for many, many, many years with all my kids, I haven't received that. Are we having trouble with this dinging? It's not just in my head, right? Oh, God, okay. So, yeah, I have concerns about replacing it, but I just have a question to confirm, or... So, in follow-up to Trustee Carabella, I would like to see it easily accessible, but also, just when you were saying about the procedure would replace the parent guide, what, like, forgive my ignorance, but what are the advantages or disadvantages? Why would we replace it with a policy? Sorry.
Thank you, Trustee Powell. Superintendent Bakich?
Trustee Powell, so, the procedure? So, the procedure would contain all of the information that's in the parent guide, which is the same information that's in the admin guide, just the admin guide goes into greater detail from an operational point of view for staff. So, mostly for the facility of people finding information, because I think that's the struggle, is on the board website, for what we perceive as being sort of easy to find, obviously, and maybe not for most, however, I mean, we could, with the recommendation that Trustee Carabella put forth, have the parent guide reflected in the policy until the procedure. We could have both, but the procedure will have the same information as the parent guide.
Thank you, Superintendent Bakich. Trustee Powell, do you have a follow-up?
I do, if you don't mind. And is it, is it up to the schools to post this on their website, or is it on, like, is it the individual school to post it? How do we get it up and accessible?
Thank you, Trustee Powell. Superintendent Bakich?
Trustee Powell, do you mean the parent guide or the procedure? Okay, okay.
Sorry, because I'm trying to figure out why, if you said one would replace the other, but if we're not doing that yet, how do you make sure it is easily and readily available?
So, we wouldn't pull the parent guide down until the procedure is completed. Yeah. And the parent guide, I'd have to check, to tell you the truth, if it's on every website. I don't know if Andrea's shaking her head. No, it's not. It's not. Okay. And so, that's a fair point. I mean, the parent guide for ease should be under, you know, it should be easily accessed, and I think that we rely on the staff to distribute the guide. The procedure, once it's formed, would be obviously on the board website, but we would also add it under our Getting Involved page that we have for parents.
Thank you, Superintendent Bakich. I'm just going to move on. Trustee Saunders?
I would like to say I agree with Trustee Agnew. I think transparency is the best policy, so I fully support.
Thank you, Trustee Saunders. Trustee Murphy?
Yeah, I'd just like to echo that. I'm in favor of this addition put forward by Trustee Agnew, because I feel like, but parents not necessarily going to look for a procedure, they're going to look for something that's called parent guide. You know, that's just a lot more clear and accessible, and it's helpful to them. So, I'm in favor.
Thank you, Trustee Murphy. Trustee Agnew?
I have closing remarks on this amendment, Madam Chair, but I do just have a clarifying question, because, so, I think where I'm trying to have a little more clarity is, is
Because, so I, I think where I'm trying to have a little more clarity is, is, uh, I like the idea of keeping it there, um, for right now as a reference, because it should be easy to find. Any parents who are trying to volunteer in our schools should not, it should be easy for them to find. What is the eligibility criteria? They have to be 18, they have to, you know, X, Y, Z. Um, and so they should have access to that guide. So it, you know, the, the way to make it easier, uh, to find is better. When that is taken down, and then a procedure is in its place, I do think we need to be intentional about how we are listing on our website, whether at the school level, uh, as well as this level for easy to find, for, again, for eligibility criteria. Because we don't want parents to have to start clicking on policies and accompanying procedures. They want to volunteer, they should be able to click on it. It should say 18, Canadian, set of whatever the eligibility criteria should be there, barely clearly, very clearly laid out. So I just make that as a comment. The other concern that I do have is that there is wording very specific in that guide. Um, and again, my understanding is, is that wording about an unclean VSC is essentially exactly that. If somebody shows up and produces an unclean VSC, that is any offense on it, that wording is very clear that that individual will not be able to volunteer in our school. So I guess I, I'm just a little bit wondering why it's listed in the parent guide, but it's not actually listed as an eli, it's, in the parent guide, it's listed as an eligibility criteria, but it is not listed as an eligibility criteria in the procedure, in the policy itself. The other items are there, but this particular wording is not there. So then is the, is the idea to just have this wording in the procedure and not in the policy? I'm just trying to understand why that wording is, in itself, is not included as part of the policy, but it is in the guide as a very, very clear eligibility criteria.
Thank you, trustee Agnew. Uh, to Director Klein or Superintendent Bukic?
Well, I could, I could start in terms of what preceded the other is the po, in this case, we have the policy, and that precedes the, the guide. And the guide would inform the procedure, which would underlie the policy. So one, one didn't necessarily connect with the other in terms of its evolution. Wonder if Superintendent Bukic could add to that, uh, a bit, in the absence of a procedure underneath the policy as it was, this, uh, this exists.
Thank you. And through you, Madam Chair, I'll just take it away. Um, I think, I mean, I can speak to it in general. This is, this has been a longstanding policy. And the idea of, um, not being able to volunteer if, if, um, there wasn't an official pardon granted, I think was embedded in the, in both the parent guides and the admin guides, for the sheer fact that it was seen as a rarity, um, and, and mostly operational in nature. Now, does that mean that it can't be captured in policy? It could be, if that's the will of the trustees to make that amendment. Um, again, uh, you know, when we have it in terms of eligibility, most often, um, if the, if the question, to be honest, comes forward from a parent, it goes through the principal. And the principal is the first contact point, communicates with the individual. Um, I think the other piece about the, the policy is that the frequency, usually the, the policy is high, um, that has a, uh, oversight, um, in terms of what occurs most often, and which will be captured in, in detail in either guides or in procedures. So, uh, at this point, I know it's, it's quite a, a concern in terms of making sure that it's communicated. Um, I believe that through the, the parent guide and the admin procedure and the, and the communication that principals provide to, uh, volunteers, parents who essentially want to volunteer, and they're asking that question, it's made clear to them, um, in that communication. In the procedure, it will be stated, because the procedure will be, um, uh, a reflection of what's in the parent guide. So like I said, the parent guide is a, um, is specific to what the parents need to know. And the admin guide goes into more detail about the operation, um, operationalizing of, of, um, volunteers in schools. And that's captured also, if you look at the policy, under what the principal, um, is responsible for. So determining the volunteering needs for the school, et cetera, their recruitment selection, et cetera. Um, uh, that all being said, um, I'm confident that once it's in the procedure, and like we said, we're going to maintain that parent guide, um, in the policy. It can remain, it can be just a duplication of information from the procedure. However, if it's, if it's the will of the trustees to, to capture that in the policy, that's certainly your decision.
Thank you, Superintendent Bukic. And trustee Kennedy, I'll get you, I just wanted to clarify, I think what I'm hearing is, we just want to make sure if we're having it as a reference right now, the policy and the procedure is written, that the spirit of what we just voted on is captured in the procedure and/or the policy. I think that's what I'm hearing. Okay. Trustee Agnew, you have a follow-up, and then I'll go to trustee Kennedy. And just fellow trustees, if you've already asked a question, can you put your hand down? Because it's confusing me. Thanks.
Yes. And so just another point of clarification, um, you know, regardless of how hard it is to find that parent guide, the reality is, there is a parent guide. So that's encouraging, because it's something that we can definitely work on as far as how to make that more available, um, and more apparent to people. But, um, so I, I guess where I, again, back to what I had said earlier, I guess where I'm struggling a little bit is that, you know, if this, if the contents of this parent guide are now put into a procedure, how are parents, in the absence of having to search, track down a procedure, how, this is important information. If someone's volunteering, this criteria is it. This is the end stop. You have an unclean VSC, you don't volunteer. I want parents to know that before they go and spend the money, before they maybe have an embarrassment or an upset about it, whatever that might be. They need to have this information readily available to them when they are considering volunteering in our schools. And so, you know, in the absence of a parent guide and having it put in the procedure, I just want to, you know, I, I really want to understand how this is going to be communicated. Because it's not going to be in the proceed, it's not going to be in the policy. It won't be easy to find. People will have to click through to a procedure to find it.
Thank you, trustee Agnew. Trustee Kennedy, or trustee Murphy? Okay. Trustee Kennedy?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just wondering, for guides, who could change a guide, um, when a guide's been written? How does that, it doesn't come to the board, I don't, I wouldn't imagine?
Trustee Kennedy, I believe that would be operational, so Director Klein, you can answer that?
It would be, it would be staff. So it would be principal, superintendent.
Thank you.
Any follow-up, trustee Kennedy? Okay, everyone, so we're still at the point where it's a friendly, oh, Superintendent Bukic?
Thank you, Madam Chair, if I could. I just wanted to respond to what, um, trustee Agnew said. So trustee Agnew, we would still have, uh, on the board website, volunteers in Catholic schools information. So if you, I'm not sure if trustees have gone lately to it, but it's under parents, it's under get involved. You go to get involved, and it, and it gives you the information regarding CPIC, um, and volunteers in Catholic schools, there's a section, there's the policy. Also, the procedure will be in, an associated procedure to this policy, so parents will have access to it that way. If you look, if you, if you go to read more, um, that information will be updated as well. Because I think that that, you know, we can, I mean, we can bold it, but we can definitely list it. You can see the eligibility requirements for, at a glance, what volunteers need to know, um, below. You can see all the points there. And then we would just be sure to make sure that that point is captured on the board website as well.
Thank you, Superintendent Bukic. Uh, trustee Carabella, your hand up.
I do. Thank you, Madam Chair. So right now, we're going to vote on just having this in the, um, as an amendment. But then I would consider speaking with the trustees and putting, uh, a motion to add that particular line to our policy. So.
So right now, just to roll track, it was a friendly consensus, because no one opposed, so we don't have a, for, a mover and a seconder, where I think we all agree that we'd like it in the reference. So now we've had clarifying questions and answers. Um, so trustee Carabella, you'd like, okay, you'd like to make another, further amendment?
Or is it separate?
A separate. Is it germane to that reference?
No, it would be a, a new line to put into the policy.
Okay. So if you don't mind, bear with me, let's maybe, if anyone has any more clarifying questions, great questions, we'll get them out of the way, so we know what we're voting on. Does anyone still oppose adding this as a reference to the policy today? No? So the will of the board would be to add volunteers in Catholic schools, a parent slash guardian guide to the references in this policy II dash 37. So it doesn't need to be moved or seconded or voted on? So we're good? Okay? Okay. So now, trustee Carabella, would you like to speak to your amendment?
Well, I would like to, you know, listening and to trustee Agnew, what she was saying, and, and also that line, there was a lot of feedback, um, about this particular point. Um, and for parents also knowing very clearly that any volunteer would have to have a clean VSC. Um, so I think it's, and the, the aspect of guides being and procedures are able to be changed, uh, without trustee input, or that we know that it comes to the board as it's operational. We're, we're informed later on if there are changes as it comes up to our, our board. I think that that's an important amendment to have, an important line to have in our policy at first glance. So it's the line that says volunteers with a, um, with a CRC slash VSC that lists any offense for which an official pardon has not been received, will not be accepted as a volunteer in the school. I think that could be in the policy itself.
Thank you, trustee Carabella. Again, I'll ask, um, we need to get, Claudia, do you need a few minutes to where to place it in the policy? Trustee Carabella?
Requirement?
So the very last bullet under requirements is a suggestion? Right there. Those are all the additions in red.
So this is adding what we kind of took out. So the same language that we removed previously, I would think? Right, trustee Carabella? That same language that we just removed?
Yeah.
It's not the same?
It's not the same.
Okay, so what I want to do, let's just take a quick couple-minute break for a second. Let's get it up on the screen, and we'll zoom in two minutes, okay?
Go in there. Yeah.
Thank you, Claudia, for bringing it back on the screen. So, Trustee Carabella, again, I'm just going to ask friendly consensus. Is this what you were looking for? Claudia has placed it up on the screen, highlighted in yellow. Volunteers for which, with a VSC for which an official pardon has not been received will not be accepted as a volunteer in the school. Perfect. Do we have trustees around the table, is this considered the will of the Board, a friendly consensus, to add this to our policy? Okay, so we don't have to move and second it? This is the will of the Board? This shall pass and be added to the policy? Okay. Do I have any other hands up here? Let's see. Trustee Murphy? Okay, thank you. Trustee Carabella?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I do have one more question regarding, there were a lot of comments coming back about the cost of the background checks, and I'm wondering, is that something that if some, if it was a barrier for somebody to volunteer, that that would be covered by the school or through the HCCF, of course, to help that parent be able to volunteer? If that would be a barrier?
And Director Klein?
Typically, this would be something that most principals, because you do want to encourage volunteers, that if someone were to say, look, this is a problem or some type of obstacle, that that would be something that would be covered through SGF, they would use that. I know it's gotten higher and it's no longer as well supported as it used to be, but we want volunteers and that would help.
Thank you, Director Klein. Trustee Carabella, follow up?
Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Carabella, I mean, sorry, Trustee Kennedy?
I just didn't know if we wanted to change the language. I think they call it sometimes a record suspension or pardon. I didn't know if we wanted to just, like, that's the term they, I think when the lawyer had spoke with us that time, I thought she used that term. Record suspension, it used to be called a pardon. Maybe we want to just put that in there.
Trustee Kennedy, so we, the will of the Board was to input this as is? So if you'd like to make it, you'd have to create another amendment?
Yeah, it's the same thing, right?
This what was in the parent guide? I think the nature of this is, I think, what we're trying to say is the will of the Board. But I don't want to talk you out of it. Okay, Trustee Powell?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just have a quick question, just in, to follow up with Trustee Carabella's comment on, it's a barrier, it's pay for, sorry, I'm trying to do two things. If it is a barrier, do we have that written anywhere, or is that, I know it's assumed, or it's a given that it is there, but is it stated there? Would you decide?
I would, I would say it's a perfect thing to be captured in the procedure. Right? So principals would look at this and it's sort of the how, right? So the policy that we're doing here is the why overall with a bit of how, and then you get into the how is this, how is this actualized? And you would, I think that's an important one to have in common practice, but you can't assume that, we all follow that.
Thank you, Director Klein. Trustee Powell, follow up?
Nope. Well, just follow up to Trustee Kennedy, who says that it is the same, records suspension, it's pardon, it's formally no.
Thank you. Trustee Murphy? Your hand's still up. Trustee Kennedy? Trustee Powell? Thank you, fellow trustees. Very grateful, some conversation, and I think really the root cause of this is to make it easier on our parents, for our volunteers who want to volunteer, because they're very important to us, and also, you know, to explain if they want to volunteer and they want to go after a pardon, there's a way to do that as well if they really want to volunteer. So, so it was all done through consensus, most of it, so fantastic. The policy will be brought forward to the November 21st, 2023 regular board meeting. Thank you, everyone. Okay, we're going to move on now. We're going to go to item 6.2, and 6.2 is Policy II-54, Prior Learning Assessment and Recognition for Mature Students. Trustees, may I have someone please move that the policy committee recommends that Policy II-54, Prior Learning Assessment and Recognition for Mature Students, be forwarded to the November 21st, 2023 regular board meeting for approval at second and third reading? May I have a mover? Trustee Powell, may I have a seconder? Trustee Duarte, thank you very much. Superintendent Del Sorto will be participating via Teams. Superintendent Del Sorto, you now have the floor.
Good evening, everyone, and through you, Madam Chair. Thank you very much. Policy Committee meeting, this Policy II-54, Prior Learning Assessment and Recognition for Mature Students, is to provide the consideration of the Policy Committee, the newly drafted Policy II-54, Policy Learning and Assessment and Recognition for Mature Students, as recommended by the staff. The Policy II-54, Prior Learning Assessment and Recognition for Mature Students, was presented in September 12th in 2023 for the policy meeting as an action item. Then it was forwarded to the September 19th, 2023, regular board meeting for approval at first reading. The policy was forwarded to stakeholder consultation from September 27th, 2023, to October 18th, 2023. The results are attached as Appendix A. And the Policy II-54, Prior Learning Assessment and Recognition for Mature Students, is attached for review by the Policy Committee.
Thank you very much, Del Sorto. Trustees, I will now open the floor to any questions that anyone may have. Okay, I'm not seeing any time. Okay, so we're going to take this to a vote. Trustees, I will take it now to a recorded vote of the main motion, reminding everyone that this is a three-quarter majority vote is required for Policy II-54 to move forward to the November 21st, 2023, regular board meeting for both the second and the third reading, which is seven, if my math is correct. Okay, Trustee Agnew?
In favor.
Trustee Duarte?
In favor.
Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Trustee Kelly?
Favor.
Trustee Kennedy?
In favor.
Trustee Murphy?
In favor.
Trustee Powell?
In favor.
Trustee Saunders?
Favor.
Trustee Chua? Trustee Chua? Trustee Dipu? Trustee Dipu? And I'm also in favor. So this, policy unanimous, we will now move it forward. The policy recommends that Policy II-54 be forwarded to the November 21st, regular board meeting. Thank you, everybody. Okay, next on the agenda is item 6.3, Policy III-12, Academic Promotion. Trustees, may I please have someone move that the policy committee recommends that Policy III-12, Academic Promotion, be forwarded to the November 21st, regular board meeting for approval? May I please have a mover?
I'll move.
Trustee Kelly? May I have a seconder?
Duarte.
Duarte? Thank you. Superintendent Oldman, you now have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I suppose, given that this was referred back from a prior discussion, I'm here to answer any remaining questions.
Thank you, Superintendent Oldman. I will now open the floor to trustees, if they have any questions. Trustee Murphy?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and through you. I have a proposed amendment, which I sent in advance. Do you want me to read that?
Thank you, Trustee Murphy. Well, Claudia will get it up on the screen and then absolutely. Trustee Murphy, I see that it's, is this your amendment up on the screen that we're looking at now? Awesome. So if you'd like to read it and then speak to it?
Through you, Madam Chair. HCDSB believes that every person has a right to employment without discrimination. HCDSB will ensure that all employment policies and practices are anti-discriminatory and will work to remove barriers for underrepresented groups at each stage of the hiring process. And so I read through PPM 165, and I pretty much took that from PP 16, PPM 165. So I thought it very well captures the essence of what, what we're trying to say in terms of the hiring practices being anti-discriminatory.
Thank you, Trustee Murphy. So I will look to our fellow trustees. Is there consensus to put this amendment forward as stated?
Madam Chair, I have a question.
Yes, Trustee Duarte?
I see the amendment here. I just wanted an opinion from Superintendent Oldman, what she thinks about this. Is this the right time, or?
I think it's okay, sure. I'll allow that, yes. Superintendent Oldman?
Thank you, through you, Chair. Okay, the, sorry, I'm just trying to read it. I guess, can I, may I inquire, in the original proposed language, which aligns and it is formed by PPM 165, as well as our equity and inclusive education policy, what the nuances and the distinctions between the newly proposed and the prior proposed language, like what the new, I guess, clarifies? May I, just from an operational perspective, to implement this appropriately, can I understand the distinction?
Thank you, Superintendent Oldman. Trustee Murphy?
Sure, yeah, and through you, Madam Chair. I think that there's multiple ways to remove barriers and decrease bias in hiring, and I think that the first one really only speaks to selectively including certain groups of individuals, whereas the, my proposed amendment speaks to removing discrimination at all stages and for everyone. So I think it's a bit more robust.
Thank you, Trustee Murphy. Superintendent Oldman?
Yeah, I think the intention with the original language was to keep it less ambiguous and to keep it simplified for the end user, just given it is a policy. So it is, as Director Klein had indicated earlier, it is informing the why. I know PPM 165 is a reference, I believe it's an added reference to this amendment, so it certainly would be there and it would be our, our operational practice to ensure that all stages, any barriers are removed. So I just wanted to highlight that for trustee consideration.
Thank you, Superintendent Oldman. That was to Trustee Duarte's question. Do you have a follow up?
No, thank you, Madam Chair. I think the original proposed language is simplified, as the old man said, and the additional language seems to be ambiguous, so I have a problem with that, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you, Trustee Duarte. So at this time, what we'll do, you'll move this. Trustee Murphy, you'll need a seconder and then we can discuss it further. Do we have a seconder for this amendment? Trustee Carabella? Thank you very much. Okay, I will move on to the speakers list. Trustee Kelly?
Yeah, I just want to mention that I, or through you, Madam Chair.
Yeah, thanks, Kelly.
I just, I want to give a comment, not particularly your question, that I think the prior wording, as Trustee Duarte mentioned, is much more distinct and much more descriptive, and as mentioned, it does follow the PPM that's mentioned, and I just think that the prior wording is more appropriate, so I will be supporting this amendment.
Thank you, Trustee Kelly. Follow up? No, probably not. Trustee Kennedy?
I kind of like the new wording, because it's not ambiguous, it gets directly taken from the PP, the PPM, especially the last, the last sentence there, really the last line, groups at each stage of the hiring process. So it's, it's really what the ministry is asking us to do, it seems, and I think that's, you know, without us reinterpreting what they're saying, we're actually saying what they are saying, and that's why I think the second part is, is more relevant to what, you know, we're guided by the ministry and that's how we should be really conducting ourselves. So I, I think the new language, well, it's, it's what we're told to do, so I think that should be the language.
Thank you, Trustee Kennedy. Director Klein and Superintendent Oldman, would you like to speak to that comment?
I think Superintendent Oldman has already been pretty clear in it in terms of the language and its, its fidelity to PPM, the PPM, and its clarity. I'm not sure if you want to add anymore to that?
All I'll add is what I think I had reiterated at the last policy meeting, and is, is really what our workforce census data does tell us. It tells us there's a gap. This PPM was written before we conducted the workforce census, so we know more than we did at the outset of the PPM's implementation. I think what it calls us to do, both PPM and our workforce census, is to bridge the gaps that exist, where it's identified through the workforce census, as we know. So I, I think our intentionality there not only was to align with PPM 165, as well as with our existing language, which, which this is informed by in our equity and inclusive education policy, but further than that is, we know more than we did when this policy was created, and I, and I think that's the intention of updating the language to reflect that we've got some work to do, and intentional work at that in bridging that underrepresented gap for our equity deserving groups.
Thank you, Superintendent Oldman. Follow up?
I remember one of the last meetings we, through you, Madam Chair, we had a discussion about, you know, we have, I think it was 81% of teachers, teachers specifically are women, female, and 19% are men, so is that something, would that be an example of something you're looking to promote or change? Like if our students are roughly 50/50, is that, is that something we're looking to modify?
Thank you, Trustee Kennedy. Sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off. Superintendent Oldman, clarity maybe on that?
Yeah, through you, Chair. Just simply, traditionally, women have been considered through the, through the code, typically an underrepresented group within the workforce, more traditionally, and it still remains a protected group, so to that end, I'll just offer that in response. I certainly understand the representational notation. I just wanted to offer that in terms of what the code historically and presently supports in terms of that.
Thank you, Superintendent Oldman. Now I'll move on to Trustee Carabella.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I was just going to say that I think that the word "underrepresented groups" captures better, you know, with the results of our census, perhaps, right? So I'm happy with this new wording. I think that it reflects well on our, going forward for our Board, to have underrepresented groups, make sure that all barriers are removed. So I will be supporting this newer wording. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Carabella. I do see Trustee Murphy, Trustee Duarte, Trustee Kennedy with their hands up.
That was a long time back.
Okay, Trustee Murphy?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and through you. I just want to set a little context here. The reason I chose that, because there was another part that I could have added on that was a continuation of my amendment, and I'll just read it for context, says, "This involves examining each part of the process, from setting job requirements and employment conditions to establishing the recruitment, application, screening, interview, and selection processes, so that no stage creates a barrier for candidates." And it made me think that, the reason why I think my amendment is more robust, is that we also have to think about retaining underrepresented groups when they join our Board. So, you know, if there are barriers when someone with a disability joins our Board, what's, you know, if we're not taking care of every step of the entire hiring process, this is from the PPM directly, you know, we risk losing the same individuals that we're trying to promote the hiring of. So I, that's where I'm coming from, and I just want that understanding to be clear. So that's, that's what I have.
Thank you, Trustee Murphy. Director Klein or Superintendent Oldman?
I really don't have any more to add to it in terms of my thoughts on it. I'm not sure if Superintendent Oldman does.
Okay, thank you. Next in line, I see Trustee Kennedy. Trustee Powell?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have a, just, I guess, a comment or a question through you, Madam Chair, to Trustee Murphy. Is, what is the concern with, so I hear what you're saying, I like the idea of the, like, at each stage of the hiring process. I like that line and I'd be happy to edit, add that into the current wording if it aligns with, you know, the wording that we have used already. Is it, I guess, is your concern with, maybe I asked this, is your concern with the word "promote" the hiring of staff? Is that okay to ask?
Thank you, sorry, thank you, Trustee Powell. Trustee Murphy?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair, and through you to Trustee Powell. Yeah, yes, it is, because if we are going to be anti-discriminatory in hiring and our hiring practices at all stages, then which groups are we promoting? Are we going to be clear on that? Is that going to be somewhere written that people can refer to? I think promoting for those individuals to come and apply and then be given a very structurally unbiased interview process, screening process, I think that, that's where the equity comes in, for me. And so that's what I, I do have an issue with that, because it's, it's unclear, like, who, which groups exactly are being promoted? Is it women? Is it, right? I'm not, I, I think they should all be invited to come and hire, promoting that at a greater level in the community, I don't know how that looks, but I think that removing barriers all through the process is super important. So for example, if someone with a hearing, someone whose heart of hearing comes to apply, are we going to remove barriers at every single point? Like, that's what I'm trying to get at here, rather than creating a system where we are actually discriminating based on something, which I don't know what that is, through this particular statement.
Thank you, Trustee Murphy. Trustee Powell, do you have a follow up?
Only to say that, like, I would be open to adding at each stage of the hiring process, because I do agree with what you're saying. And are we using, are we understanding the word "promote" in the right context? I guess that's maybe where it needs further clarification.
Okay, thank you, Trustee Powell. So I'll just move on and we'll see what we want to do. Trustee Agnew, you haven't spoken to this yet?
Thank you, through you, Madam Chair. So sort of along the same lines is, I understand, I understand the original wording and I, and I support the original wording. I also understand the need to put, or the desire to put wording in there as it's specific to removing the barriers at each stage. So as you were talking and then you were answering, my thought was, is there, is there a capacity to just include this wording that you have in addition to the wording that is currently there, that we're covering off on the initial piece, which is to promote the hiring of staff from underrepresented groups, and then also ensuring that the other piece. But it sounds like there's a challenge, not a challenge, but, you know, you're concerned about that word "promote," so I don't know if what I'm saying is going to be taken well. But that's what my thought was, is along those same lines, is I don't see any problem with the secondary wording that's been suggested, but I, I don't want to lose the first part of the wording. So I just wondered if there was an appetite to include both, but it sounds like that may not be the case.
So I think what I'm hearing, Trustee Agnew, is to, the strikeout that we have here that starts a while, to replace that, keep it in, and then add the second sentence as well. So that's a fulsome paragraph. Is that, yeah? Trustee Murphy?
Yeah, I'm not in favor of keeping that, because I need, I need clarity, like, I'm going to be blunt here, like, we have a lot more women in our Board than we do men. So if two equally qualified candidates come, one happens to be a man, are we now hiring the man to the detriment of the woman? Like, I just need clarity on that before I agree to using the word "promote." to using the word "promote," right after saying "anti-discriminatory." It seems contradictory to me.
Thank you, Trustee Murphy. Director Klein, there was a question there, so I guess I'm going to have to throw it over to you there.
Yeah, I'm going to, I'm going to ask if Superintendent Oldman would address this in the sense of how does that actualize, how is operationalized in terms of, of these, these groups that you've noted?
When we're looking at underrepresented groups, it's certainly at large, this is, this is equity work that all organizations, I'd like to say are doing, or striving to, or hopefully well-established and underway in that work. My component that I would want to add is, you know, this is about rectifying employment barriers that have existed historically. This underrepresented group is informed by, at system at large, but also by the workforce census data that we have. But I think it's, we have to call back to our census data as PPM, and that was what I was trying to reference earlier, when I had said PPM 165 requires us to look at each stage of the interview process. But two, it has to be informed by our workforce census information, to break, to bridge the Halt and Catholic gaps specifically.
Thank you, Superintendent Oldman. I will move on. Trustee Carabella?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And from our last meeting, did I understand that the percentage of the workforce census survey response was around 46%?
Trustee Carabella, Superintendent Oldman?
Yeah, I can grab that specific statistic again. I would have, it's one statistic, so I'll grab it. I don't have that readily right in front of me, but I can provide the exact response. But I believe you are correct, Trustee Carabella.
Yeah, so just to follow up, so that's, you know, not, I mean, it's 46%, but it's not 100% or 80%. So that's significant. And then I'm, I'm trying to understand some of the language that's being said here, and some of the questions that Trustee Kennedy brought forward, and about the number of, you're saying that traditionally, women are an underrepresented group, and even though in the teaching profession, they're not, we're still going to be treating them as they are. That's what I'm trying to understand.
Thank you, Trustee Carabella. So I think we need some clarification.
Yeah, so that was in response to a direct question that Trustee, through your chair, sorry, that Trustee Kennedy had posed. I don't want it to be misinterpreted and taken out of context. The workforce census data tells us that 87% of our staff are white women. 11% are racialized. That's a gap. When we have nearly 34% to 55% of our students who are racialized, that is some of the work we need to do. Two, it requires identification requirements in terms of staff who identify as being part of the 2SLGPTQIA+ community, and so do our students in that identification. So that is a gap that we are called to identify and intentionally, as the PPM, I think that's the language that Trustee Murphy was pulling from. The former part of that bullet is work to intentionally identify and remove barriers for, and then it says indigenous peoples and equity-seeking groups at each stage of the hiring process. That, that's the, the full sentence in the PPM. I think that there's a component here that's required to ensure that we take the data that is informed by our workforce census and make the bridge gaps on the groups that are underrepresented to the students that we serve. Two, from, we have identification for folks who identify as having a disability, right? That is a gap. Our students identify in the same way. That's a gap. We want our students to see themselves in their educators, in all levels of our school educator teams that are made up of lots of beautiful different professions. That's what's meant by this language, is to bridge that gap so our students see themselves in all of the ways that they come to us, in the staff that serve them in the schools. That's what's intended by it, if I can be clear in that.
Thank you, Superintendent Oldman. I am going to move on. Trustee Kelly?
Yeah, I think Superintendent Oldman pretty much summarized what I was going to say. And I'm just saying specifically from a student perspective, as a former student trustee as well, and I do know that also in the student census and student senate have mentioned it, student trustees currently have mentioned it, that they did not see themselves commonly represented among staff, which Superintendent Oldman very thoroughly described, especially those who are racialized or queer. So it's really important that we uplift those kind of voices.
Thank you for your comment, Trustee Kelly. Trustee Saunders, you're next in line.
Yeah, just, I like the PPM wording. I think it's probably been vetted by, you know, the ministry and people probably that are more qualified than, than us to, to come up with wording. So I would stick with it. I think it's, it's good, it's solid, and I think it's, it probably covers off a lot of the issues that we have.
Thank you, Trustee Saunders. Next in line is Trustee Murphy. I just want to say something. I do love, love what Trustee Agnew about the beautiful marriage between the two points in that bullet, because it indicates promotion and reducing barriers all at the same time. To me, that's a win-win. So I would support if we, if we kept both of those points. Just a comment. Trustee Murphy, you're next in line.
Yeah, I just have a question through you, Madam Chair, possibly to Superintendent Oldman. So in terms of meeting goals of the board, diversity goals, like, do we have numerical diversity goals? And I guess I'm just trying to understand how this is going to look. And then the second part of my question is, how are we promoting to those groups that you're trying to see more of to actually apply to the board? Is it something outside of our control, where perhaps some of those underrepresented groups are simply just not applying to our board, perhaps replying to the public board for some other reasons? So I just, I suppose I just, that's a two-parter. I'm sorry, it's a bit muddled.
Thank you, Trustee Murphy. Do you want to do the first question first?
Yeah, can I understand what, sorry, I wanted to be clear, so I know what's being asked, so I can try to offer a response.
So the first part was, like, okay, you know what, I guess the real question is, you know, because in the previous meeting, you had mentioned that there are systemic barriers at our board, and I'm, and I also wonder, is, is there just a reduced, are there, like, you talked about 87% of our teachers are white women, so what percentage of our applicants are white women? But I guess that would help me understand if there are systemic barriers, or if it's, if it's a function of what's going on in our, in our greater community of Halt and.
Thank you. Superintendent Oldman, are you clear on the question?
Yeah, well, I don't have the percentage of applicants who identify as, as, as white women readily on hand. Certainly, it's, as we've shared before, this is data we weren't collecting in the past. It's been necessary to collect it. We started this collection back in January of 2021, and it's been kind of progressive. We had to make some, some system enhancements and investments in that regard to be able to do this. So in terms of, of that specific data, we're certainly able to capture it. It is a voluntary question in the application process. There is, there's a, it's a mandatory question, but there's, there's an ability to say, I prefer not to disclose. So it's, it's both mandatory and voluntary, I guess I should suppose, just to be clear in that. So that we have that data. In terms of numerical goals, I, very simply to answer that question, I think the goal is to bridge the gap, and that's an ongoing goal. So that, those are goalposts that will continue to be moved for us, I think, as a system, as the needs of our, as our community and demography of the communities we serve changes and evolves. I think that that's, that's an ongoing goal, I guess, in terms of numerically, to say, is there a specific goal? No, I think the goal is to bridge the gap, is, if I can answer it in that way.
Thank you, Superintendent Oldman. Trustee Murphy? No? Okay, moving on, Trustee Kennedy.
Madam Chair, yeah, I just have a question. I think I've mentioned it a couple of times. Just wondering, like, how do we, how do we reconcile? I feel like the public board has a much easier role. I mean, they hire teachers from the bar population, you can match it up with the student population, and they kind of, it makes a lot of sense. But with our, with ours, we're basically only able to hire teachers who are Catholic. And that demographic could be different than our students, who, who don't have to be Catholic seeing in high school. So how do you, how do you do that? Like, if we have, I believe it's like 2% of students might be indigenous, but if there's no indigenous teachers or coming out of teachers college who are Catholic, what do we do there? Like, do we just, are there other roles we have available? Like, what do we do?
Thank you, Trustee Kennedy. Yeah, Superintendent Oldman? Through you, Chair. Sorry, Director Klein, if you'd like.
I'm not sure, I just, so you just, I think I've actually answered this one before. This is what we have in terms of teachers who are not Catholic?
Teachers who are not Catholic, but would...
So teachers, teachers who are Catholic are the only ones we can hire from, right? But if we're trying to match the students, the teachers with the student demographics, the students aren't all Catholic. They're not required to be. So how do you, so they may not, like, perfectly line up. So what do we do in instances where we just don't have any teachers coming out of teachers college who are Catholic to, to match our census? You know what I mean? We have, we have a gap there. What do we do? Do we have other roles?
Yeah, we have, well, we have the denominational rights that are, that are really paramount, right? So we do, we do want to ensure that we have teachers who are Catholic, because we're a Catholic school system. So that's the first, first component of, well, but I think trustees are probably aware that there are opportunities where we can't find teachers in certain areas, with certain very specialized areas very often, and where we would have to, again, go back and inform trustees regarding other, other hirings that are non-Catholic. Beyond that, turn it over to Superintendent Oldman regarding how we try and balance those two things. But of paramount importance is, of course, maintaining the integrity of our denominational schools.
Yeah, so I, through you, Chair, if I may. I think we can't presuppose that, that Catholics don't come from all races either. Like, I think our, our census data, both in the GTM, GTHA, reflects that. That was what was compared, and there is specific data through our workforce census analyses against that of our student census data that actually calls to that. So I just, our preposition wouldn't be that, that, that isn't possible, and that our denominational rights serve as a barrier to us. It's a requirement, it's constitutionally protected. We uphold that through our practices of hiring, but, but it, I think, yeah, there, it just can't presuppose that, I guess, Catholicity isn't representative of all races. And I think that's actually illustrated, that it actually very much so is, and would serve us well in, in the populations and demography of our students that we serve.
Thank you, Superintendent Oldman. Trustee Kennedy, do you have a follow-up?
Yeah, so just in, and it wasn't just, it was just an example. It could be ethnicity, it could be gender, it could be, you know, many other things. When I look at the two points, I know one's crossed out at the moment. I'm just going to throw this out there. Like, the second, I already mentioned the second line that's not crossed out, I do like. But the one that says, "Well, the qualification experience will be determining factors." I was wondering if something, you know, while the qualification and experience will be determining factors, HGDSB shall market HGDSB career opportunities to underrepresented groups, in addition to the second line. So I just, I just wonder if anyone would ever come back to us and say, "I wasn't promoted enough," or, you know what I mean? Or just, like, the word is just, like, it could mean different things to different books. But if you, if you have a system of how you do remove barriers, you can have that kind of posted in what you do and how you remove barriers. Like, you can, like, but, I think when it comes to promote, it could be at the individual level, and would someone feel like they, they weren't promoted? I don't, I don't know, I'm just throwing that out there. But if you say, "We're going to market to groups, and we're going to remove barriers," that's just something I'm throwing there. That might be, might be something to merge the two together.
Thank you, Trustee Kennedy. Superintendent Oldman, but I don't want to speak to you, but I think "promote" is very intentional, right?
Let's step in. First of all, I'm not sure necessarily understand what your meaning of "promote" at this, in this context is. Is it promote in terms of, you know, the stereotypical your teacher principal, that type of thing, or promote in terms of the position, promote the, the, the broadening and widening and deepening of our, of our, of our staff to reflect the community? I'm not, I'll assume one over the other. The second thing to say is, I think, if we're adding stuff like that, I think we're heading into the procedural, really, areas now, right? How we would do things, the modes and methods by which we would conduct our work, and, and, and again, actualize this. Not sure if, that's my understanding, anyway.
Yeah, I think reach to groups is one component. I think it's informed in hiring and recruitment endeavors beyond reach, and publicizing, a posting in, in, in a, you know, let's call it a Black Lions group, but the University of Toronto's always, right? Like, that's one way to do it, but I think it's beyond that, is, is the "shall promote." I think, actually, Trustee Kennedy, you had asked us at the last policy meeting about the "shall promote." And I, and I think we were trying to understand that it, I think you had said, "Did you mean this, or did you mean this?" And I said, "Well, I meant both," because I think that both was to ensure that it's beyond reach and, and marketing as an aspect to recruitment. So I'll just offer that.
Thank you, Superintendent Oldman. I will move on to Trustee Saunders.
Can I just ask a clarification through you, Madam Chair? Superintendent Oldman, did you say that we, the, we're 34% to 55% racialized? Did I hear that right?
Thank you, Trustee Saunders. Clarification on the numbers? Superintendent Oldman?
There's, there's panel information. It's all in the work, the student census information for students, so student census. So that's where that was reflected.
Thank you, Superintendent Oldman. Do you have a follow-up?
Hey, just sorry, so that, those are two different studies that came up with different numbers? I'm just wondering why we don't have a more accurate number?
Superintendent Oldman, just some clarity, I think we's...
Through you, Chair. Thank you. My apologies for that not reflecting through you previously. We have, the workforce census is, is one census, but it would have been conducted in both panels. So that was that response that was offered, right?
Thank you, Superintendent Oldman. When you say panels, you mean elementary?
Through you, Chair. Elementary and secondary panels. Sorry, my lingo of panels is very often, sorry, my apologies, Trustee Saunders. So both panels had different demography outcomes, and so that was where that range was provided.
Thank you, Superintendent Oldman. Next in line, I see Trustee Kennedy. Your hand is up. Thank you. I just want, I just want to put my hand, I just want to make a comment. Like, I just want to make sure we're not, the first line in highlight that's crossed out, "While qualification and experience will be determining factors." So it will be and has always been the determining factors, right? Qualification and experience. You're trying to close the gap. So the word "promote" is very intentional, right? We want to close the gap, because our, our students, everyone, are saying they don't see themselves represented, right? Can I just clarify? That's the intent of this? Superintendent Oldman?
Through you, Chair. Yes.
Thank you. Okay, so right now, we have a mover and a seconder for... Your hand's always up, so I couldn't tell the difference. Sorry, go ahead, Trustee Kennedy.
So I just want to, so this, this policy, maybe it's just a nuance, but it says academic promotion, and it mentions for those with positions of academic responsibility. We've talked a lot about teachers, maybe it just came up that way, but it doesn't mention teachers in application and scope. Is this, does this not apply to teachers, this policy? Because it mentions superintendent, principal, coordinator, vice principal, consultant, department, at any other position of academic responsibility. Does that include teachers? Or is this not specific to teachers?
So Trustee Kennedy is looking for clarification on who the policy applies to. Director Klein, Superintendent Oldman?
Through you, Chair. Those, all but superintendent and principal, but principal and vice principal arguably come from OCT requirements. Those are all teaching positions.
Thank you, Superintendent Oldman.
Should be put, I mean, it's 2,500 or 4,600 staff. Should we put teachers in there under applications group? It's the biggest group.
May I? Thank you, Trustee Kennedy. Superintendent Oldman?
Through you, Chair. This is about academic promotion specifically. So it is where an individual is seeking increasing responsibility. I think that's what's noted there. Any other position of academic responsibility, that is, academic responsibility means that you have additional responsibility at that. So that, that's what's intended by the, by the application and scope.
Thank you, Superintendent Oldman. Okay, so let's go back to the amendment that we do have on the table. I think trustees, it's now time, we've had lots of good discussion. It's time to vote on the amendment that Trustee Murphy has put forward. Trustee Murphy, if you wish to speak to it, do you do have some time before we vote?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think, I think I've spoken a lot. Thanks.
Okay, thank you, Trustee Murphy. All right, we will now be voting on the amendment that's before us. I will start with Trustee Saunders.
In favor?
Trustee Powell?
Opposed.
Trustee Murphy?
In favor.
Trustee Kennedy?
In favor.
Trustee Kelly?
In favor.
Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Trustee Duarte?
Opposed.
Trustee Agnew?
Opposed.
I don't, we don't see Trustee Chua or Trustee Depu on line, do we? I just want to give them one more chance. No, and I'm opposed. One, two, three, four, so five opposed, four in favor. The amendment fails. We will go back and put back what's marked off. All right, so now we need to vote on the policy itself with the amendments that are here. So we are, oh, I'm sorry, what did I do? Trustee Kelly? Trustee Kelly, your hand is up. I do see Trustee Kennedy's hand is up. You're doing, point of order yourself, man. Point of privilege. Okay, Trustee Kelly, what would you like to do?
I would just like to...
Please speak to, Chair. Please speak to, Chair, please speak to the friendly amendment, what would you like to do?
So the, uh, just making sure that each, my apologies, each stage would make sure that, um, there's always those practices that are anti-discriminatory, so I just know that, could we add that in as a phrasing?
Trustee Kelly, sure, so, I, just so I understand, what we just, what Trustee Murphy had put on, you want to put both of those together in the bullet?
Yes, yes, yeah.
So, okay, um, is that, do we have consensus to add what Trustee Murphy had plus what's originally in this policy?
I think Trustee Kelly wanted to add a few words, right?
No, that's, it's the previous wording, it was, yeah, but just in addition to, so instead of it being struck out, it's just included.
Yeah.
Okay, so let, if you don't mind, I'll read it, I'll read it out, and you tell me if this is exactly what you're thinking. "HCDSP believes that every person has a right to employment without discrimination. While qualification and experience will be determining factors, HCDSP shall promote the hiring of staff from underrepresented groups. HCDSP will ensure that all employment policies and practices are anti-discriminatory and will work to remove barriers for underrepresented groups at each stage of the hiring process." Is that your amendment?
That's what I had.
That we're looking for consensus on? Do we have consensus? Is anyone opposed to adding this to the policy?
No.
Do you have a question, um, trustee? So next in line would be Trustee Powell.
I was actually going to, Trustee Kelly beat me to it, so that's what I wanted to just ask.
Perfect.
If there was a way to add that in.
Trustee Agnew.
Thank you. I just wanted to, um, ask Superintendent Oldman, um, if we were to put these two together, does, you know, I, I, kind of the answer, but does one negate the other, does one mess the other off? Like, I just wanted to get clarification from Superintendent Oldman about putting these together, if that's okay.
Thank you, Trustee Agnew. Superintendent Oldman, as our HR Superintendent, are there any negative ramifications to adding these two together?
Through you, Chair, I don't, I don't see any concerns with it, I was trying to give honoring, like, I mean, balancing what the PPM says, um, and I didn't, y- you read it faster, I, I obviously am learning my own ability to, to listen, and anyway, language, I need to see it in front of me, so that's, um, and obviously, I'm not very good at reading from the screen, so I'll just, um, is it, does it say will, by ensuring? Like, I wonder if we, like, I'm just-
It says, "HCDSP will ensure that all employment policies and practices are anti-discriminatory."
Oh, Claudia, you lovely.
And will work to remove barriers for underrepresented groups at each stage of the hiring process. So it's the original verbiage that was there, plus what Trustee Murphy had brought forward this evening.
Yeah, I, I think the PPM says, "and by," like, intentionally identifying and removing barriers, so just a thought.
Uh, sorry, so, sorry, Superintendent Oldman, can you just say again what that piece was? Sorry. Was intentional, like, just what was that wording that you had said?
Yeah, through you, Chair.
Yes.
The, the PPM says, again, I'm sorry, I have it here, is intentionally identifying and removing barriers, I'm trying to use it in the active verb tense, so, um-
So as opposed to the work is to be intentional, like, that, that's the difference?
Yeah, will ensure and by intentionally removing barriers. Sorry, I'm trying to-
Trustee Kelly, this is your proposed friendly amendment?
Yeah, sure, so then, I guess, um, friendly amendment to the friendly amendment would be, so instead of it being will work to remove barriers, it would be to intentionally remove barriers for under-
It's incorrect, actually.
Yeah.
And to intentionally-
To intentionally-
Identify?
Oh, identify and remove. Mm-hmm, okay, thank you.
And to intentionally identify and remove?
Barriers, yeah.
And remove, so we need to take, yeah, will, work, and to out? Okay, "While qualification experience will be determining factors, HCDSP shall promote the hiring of staff from underrepresented groups. HCDSP will ensure that all employment policies and practices are anti-discriminatory and to intentionally identify and remove barriers for underrepresented groups at each stage of the hiring process." Trustee Kelly, is this your intention?
Uh, yes, and I just want to direct it to Superintendent Oldman, if that's good word for it.
Superintendent Oldman.
Thank you, through you, Chair. My, my only, this is just more grammatical, should it say will ensure that, and then all employment practices, and, sorry, I know, will ensure that all employment, it's the to intentionally identify, um, will ensure.
Superintendent, and will intentionally identify.
Yeah, I think it's the, I think it's the to, yeah.
Yeah, and will intentionally identify? And will intentionally identify and remove? Will intentionally identify and remove barriers for underrepresented groups at each stage of the hiring process? Superintendent Oldman? We have to get it right, we are in the education sector.
Through you, Chair. I, I think it's, I think it's grammatically sound, I think that, that you could remove one of the wills, but I don't want to take away, because it's, it's just a long sentence at this point, so I, I'm just trying to work with that as, as a run-on more than anything, but I, I, um, because it's, we're saying we will ensure, um, and we also will intentionally identify. So I think, I think it's fine, it, grammatically, it, it's just a long sentence, so I think, um, as long as it's not lost, and it works for the, the friendly amendment as suggested, I think it's fine in terms of practice and not off.
Okay, so, so back to Trustee Kelly, who originally brought this amendment forward to the trustees, if there's a flavor, does this, is this the spirit of your intent to bring forth this amendment as we see on the screen, Trustee Kelly?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Again, I'm going to ask, before we do a mover, is there a flavor to add this as a friendly amendment? No? Okay, so we need to get someone to move it and to second it, so Trustee Kelly moves it? Can I get someone to second? Okay, Trustee Powell will second it? Okay, so, Trustee Carabella, you have your hand up.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I was just also looking at the wording, and I wondered if the word strives, so HCDSP will strive to ensure that all employment policies, so, because when you're going to ensure, can we really ensure 100%? Or like, that's our goal, we're striving for that? Thank you.
Trustee Carabella, is there a, that would be a friendly amendment, since it's already moved and seconded? Trustee Kelly?
Sorry, is that question directed to me? Because I guess-
Yes, because it's your, yeah, your amendment, yeah.
Okay, through you, Madam Chair, so I, um, I wouldn't put to strive, just because it makes sure that we're actively ensuring that, rather than just, like, i- it makes it more lighthearted, whereas we want to make sure that we're following those specific practices.
Thank you, Trustee Kelly. Do you have a follow-up, Trustee Carabella? No? Over, Trustee Saunders, you're next.
Yeah, I just like will work, it's less wordy, it's, it's more direct, and it, uh, I think it, it, it's an action, and I like it, will work.
Thank you, Trustee Saunders. Trustee Powell?
I just wanted to say that, um, this was in, this is in our procedure, um, under, uh, hiring practices for teachers and occasional teachers, so the wording there is, may I read it? I, is that okay, or am I changing the friendly amendment to the friendly amendment to the-
You wanted to read it to do what? Add to this amendment?
Um, well, we're trying to talk about the wording, right? We're trying to make sure, the wording, can we compare it to what the wording is in the procedure? Or can I not do that, because it's not mine?
You would have to go to Trustee Kelly, it's her, it's, it's the board's amendment, but she would have to be conciliatory to make it a friendly amendment?
May I read it?
And this is the policy for academic promotion, all right? We're talking about academic promotion.
Yes, so this is under hiring practices, okay, I see what you're saying.
So, Trustee Powell, you, what would you like to request, Trustee Kelly?
May I share what is in currently written?
Sure.
Because it was created by our, by our team here, so we're trying to get the wording right.
Sure.
Um, so, under our hiring practices for teachers and occasional teachers, we have identify and remove barriers for Indigenous peoples and equity-seeking groups at each stage of the hiring process, and in brackets, "from setting job requirements and employment conditions to establishing recruitment, application, screening, interview, and selection processes." So, I mean, we don't need all that, but it just says identify and remove barriers at each stage of the hiring.
So currently have will intentionally identify and remove barriers for underrepresented groups at each stage of the hiring process, so, Trustee Powell, what would you like to change in that sentence?
Nothing, it was more, I shouldn't say nothing, it was just trying to get the right, what we're talking about with will intentionally identify and remove barriers, we have that, right?
Mm-hmm.
At each stage of the hiring process.
And it's-
So when you were, when we were just trying to go back and forth of what it is, that aligns with what is in the hiring procedure for teachers and occasional teachers, so could it work the same? I guess that would be my question, per, through you, Madam Chair, as Senator, Superintendent, Oldman.
Not sure if that's a promotion or demotion, but through you, Chair.
Speaking of promotions-
I know.
Is it a promotion?
Thank you, Trustee Powell, over to Superintendent slash Senator Oldman.
Wow.
Just, how do you like that wording?
I'm not sure, about Senator or about, no, no.
You pick.
Through, through you, Chair, this, all of this language, so VI99, which Trustee Powell is referencing, um, whi- which is broader in terms of, I guess, its scope and would be, it's kind of the, the sister, um, procedure to this in terms of how we operationalize it, is certainly, all of this is direct language from the PPM 165, so that language is directly pulled from it, as would, um, that, that's where this intentionally identify was pulled from as well, um, so it's all coming from the same language, um, in VI99 and in triple I-12.
Thank you, Superintendent Oldman. Trustee Powell, do you have a follow-up?
Uh, I guess, just to say, like, if we can, I mean, I think the wording aligns, and, like I said, they've already created it, why rewrite the will? So, I'm good with it as it is, thank you, Trustee Kelly.
Thank you, Trustee Powell. Trustee Kennedy.
Sorry, just maybe just fall to Superintendent Oldman, through you, Madam Chair, which language was, all the language was in, was taken from the PPM?
Thank you, Trustee Kennedy, so Superintendent Oldman?
Thank you, through you, Chair. Um, the, the VI99 was informed by PPM 165, um, as is triple I-12, um, the language here in, in the yellow, as it's being proposed, is what aligns, it, it's summarizing the areas that, that Trustee Murphy, um, I think already said was, was pulled from the PPM, um, the language that I think there's varied there, Trustee Kennedy, was the intentionally identify and remove.
Thank you, Superintendent Oldman. Trustee Kennedy, do you have a follow-up?
We've got that cursor there, Madam Chair, it's like blinking on the screen, "HCDSP will ensure, um, that all employment policies and procedures are anti-" and, and this is, "and will intentionally identify," if we just want to make it a little bit exactly what it says, it says, "will work to intentionally identify" in the PPM, instead of will intentionally ident-, "will work to intentionally identify." That may be a little, you know, give us a little more maneuverability there.
Thank you, Trustee Kennedy, so I'll go over to Trustee Kelly, um, to add will work, work to, in between will and intentionally, is, is there a flavor for that, Trustee Kelly, since this is your amendment?
I, I'm fine with that, it's just a little wordy, so I don't, I don't know if we should just separate it into an entirely different.
It's under the DEI Human Rights Section of the PPM, that's why, that's where I found it. Work to, DEI, yeah.
Trustee Kelly, do you think, I, doesn't look like it changes anything in your amendment, but that's up to you to discern?
I think I'm, yeah, I'm okay with that.
Okay, so everyone okay with that? Okay, perfect, thank you, Trustee Kennedy, over to Trustee Carabella, and then we're going to go for a vote on this amendment.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair. So I'm a little more confused, uh, because when I look at the PP, the PPM, it speaks to, uh, school board teacher hiring practices, so it doesn't really speak to promotion. And then I, I know we have, like, two policies that are so similar, so there's policy I, triple I dash 12, academic promotion, then we have policy triple I dash 11, hiring and promotion policy, academic and non-academic personnel, and I'm just a little confused, um, right now about the two policies, and the PPM is about teachers. So can I get some clarification on that?
Thank you, Trustee Carabella, of course. Superintendent Oldman, just some clarity, I think, on all the different policies and procedures that we're talking about right now.
Yep, sure, thank you, and through you, Chair. So this, again, the application and scope, as would be any policy, the application and scope is going to identify where this language specifically comes in, um, so that's what's intended here, um, is for the application and scope to apply for these positions of academic promotion, additional academic responsibility, right? So this is where this is, is calling us to, so when we say that it's, it's for teacher hiring, um, again, I, I think it's calling us in our own, again, staff, workforce, demography and census data, um, that this should be represented in all positions and levels of the organization, so I think that that's where this would be appropriate to be, be housed, because this does speak to those at increasing responsibility levels of the organization, um, including those that are teachers.
Thank you, Superintendent Oldman. Trustee Carabella, do you have a follow-up?
No, thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Carabella, I see Trustee Saunders is next in line.
Yes, sir, just a clarification, are we voting on the second amendment, and then we vote on the entire amendment, or how are we, how are we voting?
Thank you, Trustee Saunders, so the amendment that we see here in yellow has been moved and seconded, so we will vote on that, and whatever happens to that amendment, pass or fail, then we're going to vote on the entire policy as amended.
Sorry, just, because I thought, um, you, um, Trustee Kelly had brought forward some changes, and we said, I said, no, I didn't want to make those changes, do we not have to vote on those changes, then vote on the, the, the rest of the yellow part, and then vote on the whole thing? Sorry.
Yeah, so exactly, so because there wasn't a flavor for consensus, then we had to get someone moving and second it, and then we've had this discussion and debate, and then we're going to go to a vote, to see if we want to add everything in yellow that's on the screen now as an amendment to this current policy. What's wrong?
I didn't think that's what we were doing, I, I thought-
It made sense to me, but it might not.
So originally, um, um, Trustee Murphy brought forward the addition, then Trustee Kelly brought forward a change to that addition, so I thought we were voting on Trustee Kelly's change, then we vote on Trustee Murphy's, uh, no?
No.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, Trustee Murphy, unfortunately, that amendment failed, so then we started again, and Trustee Kelly brought this up, we didn't have consensus, so we have to do it officially in front of you.
Okay, so we do it that way?
Yeah, so that's what we're going to be doing right now, so we're going to be voting, I don't see any other hands up, we're going to vote on this as amended with the yellow highlights, okay? Okay, so, Trustee Agnew.
Um, I am in favor.
Thank you, Trustee Duarte.
In favor.
Trustee Carabella?
I'm not sure yet.
Okay, I'll come back. Trustee Kelly?
In favor.
Trustee Kennedy?
In favor.
Trustee Murphy?
Opposed.
Trustee Powell?
In favor.
Trustee Saunders?
Opposed.
Trustee Carabella?
Opposed.
And I am, oh, I am, wait a minute, and we don't have any student, Trustee Chua or Deepu, Trustee Deepu, Trustee Chua, you never know, they might have signed in late. And I am, what am I, I am in favor, so one, two, three, four, five, six are in favor of the amendment, and three are opposed, so that amendment passes. Now, everyone, we will be voting on the policy as amended. Item 6.3. Okay, you ready?
Madam Chair, are we going to ask questions about the rest, that second, that second red line from the bottom of the bullet, or no?
Uh, you may, if your hand is up, yes. Not this time, when it needs to be. Trustee Kennedy, I see your hand is up, do you have a question?
Thank you, Madam. I just have a question about, um, so I do see where a lot of the, the wording has come from, merit, diversity, equity, and rights, employment, belief, fairness, and transparency, they're all in the PPM, which is great, just wondering about transparency, so these are So these are for roles that are more of responsibility in nature. How do we follow, like, do we have guidelines for these, for these, for these items like transparency? Do we, do we post positions on, say, Indeed or for, for these positions that are above in the, in the policy under the application scope? Like, are all of those positions posted publicly all the time? Is that part of transparency as an example? Do we have a, like, a procedure on that?
Trustee Kennedy, so in reference to this policy, the academic promotion, superintendent Oldman or Director Klein, if you want to speak to that?
Through you, Chair. The collective agreement would govern how we hire positions of academic responsibility. And beyond that, yes, we would publicly post that through. Indeed isn't typically used for, for teacher recruitment, but an equivalent to that, trustee Kennedy, is applied to education and that is accessible by any teacher who is certified within the province of Ontario and beyond for, for interest and application.
Thank you, superintendent Oldman. Trustee Kennedy, do you have a follow-up? You'll put your hand down? Thank you. Okay, so now we are going to vote on the main motion as amended. I will start and go the other way, just to give everyone a warning. So trustee Saunders, how do you vote for this policy?
I'm opposed.
Opposed, okay. Trustee Powell.
In favor.
Trustee Murphy.
Opposed.
Trustee Kennedy.
In favor.
Trustee Kelly.
In favor.
Trustee Carabella.
I'm going to abstain.
Trustee Duarte.
In favor.
Trustee Agnew.
In favor.
Trustee Chua, trustee Deepu. Trustee Chua, trustee Deepu. Nope. And I am in favor. One, two, three, four, five, six in favor. Two opposed, one abstention. This policy, triple I dash 12, will be moved forward and brought to the November 21st, 2023 regular board meeting. Thank you, everybody. Okay, moving on, we're to item 6.4, policy II dash 02, educational assistance. Trustees, can I please have someone move that the policy committee recommends that policy II dash 02, educational assistance, be forwarded to the November 21st, 2023 regular board meeting for approval to rescind? May I have a mover, please? Thank you, trustee Murphy. May I have someone second? Trustee Agnew, thank you very much. Superintendent Oldman, you now have the floor.
Thank you, through you, Chair. Just when we thought we were over with me. Okay, so this, this policy in front of us is, it's been reflected upon by myself and superintendent Jack Caldera in terms of, of what it really endeavors to say. And really ultimately, it outlines what we believe is a job description for educational assistance, which wouldn't necessarily be normative in my experience nor hers in terms of being prescribed in policy. For, so for that reason, it's our recommendation that, and this isn't reflected in any other employee group. So for that reason, we believe that it should be rescinded.
Thank you, superintendent Oldman. I will now, trustees, open the floor to any questions that anyone may have. Seeing none, we will move this to a vote to rescind policy II dash 02, educational assistance. Trustee Agnew.
In favor.
Trustee Duarte.
In favor.
Trustee Carabella.
In favor.
Trustee Kelly.
In favor.
Trustee Kennedy.
Opposed.
Trustee Murphy.
In favor.
Trustee Powell.
In favor.
Trustee Saunders.
In favor.
Trustee Chua, trustee Deepu. And I'm also in favor. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, eight in favor, one opposed. This will pass and will be now moved to the November 21st, 2023 regular board meeting to rescind. Thank you, everyone. Okay, moving on, item number seven, discussion item. So this is just something I wanted to bring to everyone's attention. We did talk about it at some other board meetings. But some background, policy I dash 40, the performance appraisal of the director of education, was last reviewed as a discussion item at the April 13th, 2021 policy committee meeting. At the June 16th, 2021 special board meeting, the policy was deferred to the policy committee for review pending future updates from the Ministry of Education. Recent changes to the Education Act through the Better Schools and Student Outcomes Act 2023 establishes requirements and a standardized process for boards of trustees to monitor and evaluate the performance of the director of education, including progress on the provincial education priorities for student achievement as set out in Ontario Regulation 224 dash 23. The Ministry of Education is currently seeking stakeholder feedback on the key elements of a standardized process and mandatory standards for the director of education performance appraisal. Further direction from the ministry is anticipated in January or February 2024. This matter is now placed before us for further discussion. I really just wanted to bring it forward. As we get new information, we will potentially bring it back to a policy meeting for discussion and reflection. Okay. Trustee Carabella.
Thank you, through you, Madam Chair. Could we get the timelines for the, when we submit the director appraisal?
Oh, thank you, trustee Carabella. I am going to defer to our esteemed chair, trustee Duarte. This has probably got that memorized, as does vice chair.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Trustee Carabella, we'll start the process in March. And in, in the month, we'll send out the forms, fill out the forms and give it back. And first week of June, it needs to be handed to the director. End of June, the director needs to respond to the board. That completes the process.
Thank you, trustee Duarte. Trustee Carabella, do you have a follow-up?
Well, the follow-up, I think we all want to know if it's due back January and February, that it comes to, has to come to a policy meeting. And then that means it goes, well, it's going to be tight. So I don't know if there's a way. Well, we'll just have to hope it comes. Thank you.
Yeah, trustee Carabella, I guess we just wait for the feedback and see how quickly we can pivot. We may or may not be able to. We'll try. We just have to give enough time, in all fairness, for the actual process so that if many changes are made, we're doing it in due speed, so it's fair to all parties involved, right? Trustee Carabella, yeah?
So I do have a follow-up then. Is this something that's going to have to go out for stakeholder feedback?
It's a very good question, trustee Carabella. Usually it's new policies. I would, if it's a will of the board, we could, yeah, pardon? Yeah. Andrea, you have your light on, you're ready.
I just turned it on. It's usually, yes, if it's a new policy or if you are making significant changes, something that would, then you would, you know, and always, as always, you can, you know, as a policy committee, you can decide you want to send it up for consultation.
Thank you for the clarification there. Superintendent Fekich?
Thank you, and through you, Madam Chair. It would depend also, I understand that from the information that I've had, that it's going to come through as a PPM. So it would be governed by what's in the PPM. So that's what, that was what would inform the changes as well.
Thank you very much for that clarification, superintendent. Okay. I don't see any other hands up. We will move on to item number eight, which is information items. Items 8.1 to 8.2 are administrative procedures provided for your information, and these were already approved at the November 6th, 2023 senior administration meeting. Item 8.3 lists the upcoming agenda items for the December 12th, 2023 policy committee meeting. Items are included for trustees as information regarding agenda items for the upcoming policy committee meeting. Item number nine, any miscellaneous? There is no miscellaneous information. I don't think anything was added at the time of the approval of the agenda. Item 10, correspondence, there was no, none submitted. Item 11, in camera, there is no in-camera agenda this evening. A motion to excuse absent committee members. So we need to excuse trustee Chua, trustee Deepu and trustee McGuire. May I please have a mover?
I'll move.
Trustee Kelly, may I have a seconder? Trustee Duarte? That trustees, Chua, Deepu and McGuire be excused, all in favor? Anyone opposed? Seeing none, that is duly moved. May I please have a motion to adjourn? Mover, trustee Saunders, may I have a seconder? Trustee Carabella? All in favor? No one's opposed? Thank you. I now ask trustee Murphy to end the meeting with a closing prayer.
I'm going to be honest, I didn't scroll all the way to the bottom. I apologize. So we're going to do a hail Mary. Amen to Father, Son, the Holy Spirit, amen. Hail Mary, full of grace, the Lord is with thee. Blessed art thou amongst women, and blessed is the fruit of thy womb. Holy Mary, Mother of God, pray for us sinners, now and at the hour of our death.
Thank you, everyone.